We're going to call the meeting to Arthur. We're going to stand for the, if you can, stand for the National Anthem and the Pledge Allegiance and the National Anthem. And we're going to have Navea Argamendoa from Burnco High School sing the National Anthem for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Navea? You got to turn them.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's fragrant glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you, great job, Navea. Wonderful job, Navea and Jawa. Thank you for being here tonight. You did a beautiful job. Okay, we have the... Roll call.
Member Clancy.
Here.
Member Johnson.
Here.
Member Kamara.
Here.
Member Mailman.
Here.
Member McCullough.
Here.
Member O'Connell Novick.
Here.
And Mayor Petty.
Here.
Okay, we have the consent decree. Those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Public comment. Any person who has two minutes on any item appear on the agenda. This your name and item number or subject matter. Anybody want to speak tonight? This is the time.
I'm ready to hear. Hi, my name is Luann Gallagher. I am a Worcester public school teacher in first grade Chandler Elementary. I am also a resident of the city of Worcester for, I'm not going to tell you how long because I've been here as long as I'm old. I am, what?
Right in the mic.
This? Sorry, like this? Jesus. Okay, like better?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm looking for, I don't know what the item number is and I apologize, but I'm looking for a one-day, four-hour license, liquor license to hold our high school reunion at Dougherty High School. We were planning a social there for January 27th, which you all are welcome to join us. It'll be fun. We have music and food and other little activities and games that are going to be planned. So, you know, I realize this is very late on the agenda and I certainly do apologize, but time is of the essence because we are trying to set up invitations and we need to know, do we need to write, you know, cash bar, which will only be beer and wine? Or is it going to be, you know, they'll have to elsewhere find a drink beforehand or after? So, we're hoping that this gets passed because I think it will be nice and we're there to celebrate Dougherty, the new high school, as well as commemorate the old high school that we all went to. My children all are graduates of Dougherty High School, so it's a little touching for me to be able to walk through the halls again for one last time. That's it?
Perfect.
Any questions? Am I supposed to ask that?
No.
Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Luann, appreciate it. Okay. Anybody else? Nope, seeing nobody else. We're going to go public petitions to consider adding physical education to all four quarters of the school year at Worcester East Middle. Anybody here for that? Guess we'll send that to the administration or to finance or to governance. We'll send that to the superintendent. Okay, those in favor, opposed, so ordered. We have the report from the superintendent. Report here, anywhere together student academic achievement, part one. Did I miss something? Oh, I missed that, yes. Hang on, before we go to the, just have a motion to make. Pursuant to action taken executive session was moved to ratified memorandum of agreement between the Worcester School Committee and the Massachusetts Nurses Association for and on behalf of the Worcester School Nurses for the period of 23-24 school year relating to payment of the hourly rate for after-school and evening programs. Roll call.
Member Clancy.
Yes.
Member Johnson.
Yes.
Member Kamara.
Yes.
Member Mailman.
Yes.
Member McCullough.
Yes.
Member O'Connell Novick.
Yes.
Mayor Petty.
Yes.
Okay. Dr. Morse.
Good evening. We are pleased to be here tonight to present the report of the superintendent. My colleague, Dr. Marco Andren, our Director of Research and Accountability, will present the first part of a two-part series on MCAS and accountability. This presentation is intended to be a high-level overview in which trends and themes from MCAS and accountability are shared from the 2022-23 school year. Our next presentation will delve into subgroup analyses and additional accountability information. We will also present more information about our next steps forward. It is also important to mention that while MCAS is important, it is only one measure that does not fully capture the diverse range of skills, talents, and abilities our students possess, nor does it adequately describe the quality of a school, its people, programs, or potential. Additionally, while we were certainly not where we need to be, it is important to note that Worcester Public Schools, like the rest of the state, has held somewhat steady on MCAS. Our scores indicate that by holding steady, we have stemmed the decline seen since post-COVID testing. DESI officials highlighted this as a positive step forward as the compounding academic effects of the pandemic, while still a challenge, have appeared to have been somewhat halted. However, we have still much work to do. So, tonight, we're going to be looking over part one, and tonight we'll be talking about the superintendent's student goals, accountability glows and grows, and information about MCAS. So, I'm going to draw you to the student goals. By June, we will work tirelessly to collaboratively lead school teams to use multiple sources of data and evidence to respond and improve outcomes in all schools. Thank you. And we will work with an intentional focus on historically underserved youth through building capacity, valuing knowledge, engaging in authentic engagement, and a sense of belonging. This will be measured by an increase in grade three reading performance. We will measure end of year 2022-23 to the end of year next of this year, 23-24. We will also measure, increase the percentage of students in grades seven through 12 who self-report they are more engaged in school. There will be other impacts as a result of this goal. We have an overview of ways that we are going to decrease the, increase the accountability score for varieties of schools, mainly the ones that are scoring between five and 20. Any school below or at five will increase by four percentile points. Any school between six and 10 will increase by five percentile points. And any school between 11 and 20 will increase by six percentile points. In addition, we'll have product evidence. Last year, you heard a lot about the instructional framework, the vision of a learner. We were very busy with MTS implementation guides and plans. We realized that this year, in order to best serve this goal, we will need a Worcester Public Schools Data Literacy Guidebook as we work to create a data-literate school district and community. In addition, we will be building and designing a multilingual education operating manual. As the majority of our students are multilingual learners, it will be best to equip our educators with the tools and information that they need to deliver high-quality instruction. Throughout the years, as we deliver on these goals, we also believe that over time, we will build a system where all pre-K to 12 students have equitable opportunities to take ownership of their learning, engage in a variety of courses that are rigorous and relevant, and provide experience so that our students can achieve their personal goals. I will now turn this piece over to my colleague, Dr. Marco Andren.
Thank you, Dr. Morse. So, as a quick refresher, there are a number of indicators in the accountability system. If you recall, last year, we talked about 2022 being a sort of reset in the baseline for accountability. This year, 2020, well, this past year, 2023 was the first full school accountability determination since 2019. So, 2023 school results, accountability results were the first time since 2019. There are a set of weighted indicators that are used by DESI. They're not just MCAS, there are a number of them. Left-hand side, you can see non-high school, and right-hand side, you can see high school. Just to quickly go over these, non-high school, you'll see that there's a three-to-one ratio between achievement and student growth. They also include, for Ls, our English learners, their progress towards targets in English-language proficiency, and a measure indicator of chronic absenteeism. At the high school level, it's very similar, there's just a couple of additional indicators that our high schools have. It's still considered a three-to-one ratio for achievement to student growth, but DESI folds high school completion into the achievement bucket, and that is including things like the graduation rate, extended engagement rate, annual dropout rate. And you'll also note that the chronic absenteeism bucket also includes advanced coursework. So, globally, these are the indicators that DESI uses in the accountability system to basically measure our schools against all the schools in the state.
Could you speak right into the microphone?
The next slide, this is their overall glows and grows from a review of the accountability results. Some of these items, as Dr. Morse has mentioned, will be reviewed today. A couple of them are going to be reviewed in part two. Let's say, overall, our school accountability results are showing positive signs of improvement. This is also true for grades three through eight for math and science. Our areas for growth, those include reading, where we've seen a little change since the pandemic, where we've seen little change since the pandemic. Grade 10 in terms of achievement as well on MCAS. We're seeing performance gaps for groups such as our Hispanic-Latino students, our English learners, and students with disabilities, which will be covered in part two. And we're also seeing decline with our English learners in meeting their annual progress targets, which will also be covered in part two. Next few slides, we'll just be going through these glows and grows. And this first slide, this is just a quick summary of some of our accountability scores that we get, kind of count of those. And at the top, you'll see the schools that since 2019 have had a five or more point gain in their percentiles, in their percentile ranks. Chandler Magnet being at the top of the list there with 19 points in the past few years. Overall, there's been a decrease in the number of schools with a DESI classification of requiring assistance or intervention. So, we've gone from 13 schools with that classification in 2019 to 10 in 2023. So, that's good news. Worcester also has the fewest number of schools in a 10th percentile, the lowest 10th percentile since 2018 at six. And you can see that it's a third from the bottom row on the bottom table. We had 10 schools in 19, nine in 22, and now six in 23. Schools are making gains in their accountability percentiles. Again, the list of the 16 schools with five or more points are at the top. And again, overall, we can see that, you know, 21 schools had percentiles that are higher than 2019, and we had, where we had 11 schools in 22 with a five-point gain from 2019. This past year, we had five more schools hitting that mark. Another glow for us, here you're looking at mathematics on the top, grades three through eight, Worcester versus state. On the bottom, you'll see grades five and eight for science, again Worcester versus state. Here, we're seeing a pattern of improvement in math for grades three through eight. We have not reached pre-pandemic rates, but we're making progress towards that number. The same is true for grade five in science, this on the bottom again. Grade eight, we've surpassed our 2019 rate, so we're at 24% this past year. We were at 22% back in 2019. This four-point jump, just to note, DESI in their presentations say that a two-point gain they consider to be meaningful. So, we had a four-point gain from the prior year, and we're two points higher now than we were back in 2019. And this was happening while the state's percentages went down from 42 to 41. All right, transitioning to some grows. On this slide, we're looking at the MCAS ELA, percentage meeting and exceeding expectations. Dark blue is Worcester, dark orange also Worcester. The dark blue is three to eight, and the dark orange is 10. The lighter blue and lighter orange are the state. Again, light blue, three to eight, orange is 10 for the state. And here, you'll see that the patterns of ELA performance, as mentioned before by Dr. Morse, are mostly following state and national trends. Three to eight has mostly stabilized for the district and the state. DESI, I just mentioned again, DESI interprets a two-point gain as meaningful, but if you look at our grade 10 students, you'll notice that there has been decline in the past two years in the ELA. And the gaps with the state because of the decline have actually widened, but gaps for grades three through eight are relatively stable. On this slide, we're looking at ELA for grade three specifically. The orange is STAR, that's our STAR assessment, the end of year. We use the state benchmark to forecast our performance on the MCAS reading or MCAS ELA. The blue you'll see is our MCAS performance. These are, again, third grade percent of students who are exceeding, meeting or exceeding expectations from 19 through 23. I just want to note, like, reading on grade level by the end of third grade is considered a milestone where students who, where students should be transitioning from learning to read to reading to learn. And so, you know, it's an important milestone age, and it's important to note that the students in 2023 were third graders, they were kindergartners in 2020. So, right in the midst of the pandemic, they were kindergartners. So, this is the first cohort of students at K who, this is the first time they're testing, so they haven't tested before, and this is the first time they're testing. So, for us, in terms of our third-grade ELA proficiency, we can see that 22 to 23, we've pretty much held steady. The same's been true for the state. The state rate had dipped down and it was at 44% the past two years. So, as Dr. Morse mentioned, you know, we're kind of like, things have halted a little bit. The STAR, as mentioned before, was a forecasting tool for us. We use it a number of different ways, but we'll also be using it this year to monitor the progress of our students in reading, particularly as we now implement the new Amplify Curricula Resource. This slide is for MCAS ELA. It's a grade breakdown, grades three through eight and 10, 2019, 21, 22, and 23. Things of note on this slide, that we have a higher percentage of students in grades five and six who met or exceeded expectations in ELA than the prior years, fifth and sixth grade students. And then, we see that in grades three, seven, and 10, we had declines over the prior year. Grades four and eight held steady. On this slide, we're looking at two cohorts of students, and you'll notice that the top half is a class of 2025. So, it goes from 2023 back to 2018, and it shows you which grade level those students were in. And so, 2023, the top is grade 10, going back to grade five, and the bottom half is 2023, grade eight, going back to grade three. And we want to look at performance from a cohort perspective. On the prior slides, we look at the latest group of students in third grade versus the prior group of students in third grade. But because of the pandemic, we want to take a look and see for a group of students who, you know, tracking them over the course of time for their own grade levels, to see how they had performed. And we can see that with the pandemic there in 2020, you can see how the performance for these particular groups of students in grades 10 and eight had changed, they were impacted. The national conversation at this point is that the impact of the pandemic and interrupted schooling persists, but that we've stopped seeing, we've seen a stop in the declines. And in some places, there are signs of improvement, although we still have some work to do to get back to 2019 levels. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have questions? Member Novick?
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I will just say that on a presentation like this, when the focus is on data, if we can have the graphs at the same time as the rest of the agenda, that would be useful. So, first, I just wanted to note on the student goal slide, we did actually make a motion to strike the impact evidence pieces, and I understand we're going to pay attention to that. I just want to make sure that none of us think that we're holding the superintendent accountable to that, since we can't actually get that until afterward. Is there a plan through the chair to administration for the next presentation to actually look at the other pieces of the accountability system? Because I was hoping that we were going to have a conversation not only about the MCAS scores, but, you know, as much as, you know, and appreciate the pie chart, that the majority of the weight is still on the MCAS scores, there was something of a revolution in terms of how we do the accountability calculation after the adoption of the new federal law. And is there a plan to give us information around the chronic absenteeism rates, English proficiency? In particular, I'm concerned about the high school completion numbers, less the graduation, but the other two pieces looked like we've had some declines. So, I won't ask those questions now, if you're going to do it next time, but is that the plan?
Through the chair, yes. The next presentation is a much deeper dive into the accountability system and different subgroups that performed on MCAS.
Okay, that's good. I mean, again, because there's, you know, in terms of, you know, glows, the fact that we're exceeding our targets in terms of chronic absenteeism, I think actually probably sets us apart in the state, and it should be celebrated. I understand that we want to be thoughtful about how we frame, how we talk about these things. The state, though, of course, is required to declare a 10th percentile. Can I just, I want to make sure that I'm understanding correctly when you all are having this conversation. On slide six with the glows for accountability, when you say accountability percentile, percentage point increase, what is it we're talking about? Because I want to make sure that I'm looking at the same table that you are.
Looking at the school accountability percentiles from 2019 to 2023, and the difference between those two scores.
So, you're looking at what the state refers to as, what they do is they, so just the accountability percentile, you're not doing anything with the progress towards improvement targets, which is on the same chart?
No, not in this presentation.
Okay, and so essentially then, the focus on that top chart is in this ongoing question of where are we ranked against other schools through the chair to administration?
So, school? Through the chair. Schools are compared to themselves across the state of similar types. So, elementary schools are three to eight are compared to three to eight. Those who are hybrid are compared in their own group, and then high schools compared to other high schools. So, they're ranked against each other.
Yes, okay. So, I want to make sure that we're not talking across purposes. They are ranked, we're not talking about the school competing against itself, which is what the, how you're progressing towards your improvement target. We're talking about how elementary schools are competing against other elementary schools in the state, and high schools against high schools.
Correct.
Okay. So, to Dr. Morse's point, ongoingly, I want to make sure that we're cautious in ascribing too much to that, and I'm going to make the same point that I made when we were doing this with the superintendent. If everybody gets better, which is the plan, we can see no progress in our percentiles against other schools and still be doing better. And I think, right, I see Member Clancy frowning, so I want to make sure that I'm clear, right? If, what this is, is they take, they do a 99 to one, and if everybody's scores go up, you can still be two and have done doing better. So, I just, I want to be careful, and partly I say that because the state's always careful. We do that because it's written into the federal law, but I don't want us to attach too, too much importance to that. I'm much more interested in how we're doing against our target, and I want to make sure that we're telling that story. The other thing, and this may be something that you're planning on doing next time, too, is this sort of, we're talking about meeting or exceeding expectations as if MCAS has passed fail. And certainly, we know in 10th grade, you either meet the competency determination or you don't. But other than that, there's actually a pretty big range. And one of the things that I really would be interested in our exploring is, and this was pointed out to me the other night, actually, by a teacher, where are we on exceeding expectations? Right, so 10th grade MCAS in ELA, 7% of our students are exceeding expectations. In math, it's four. And I look at the number of kids that we have in AP Stats, in AP Calc, and so forth, and I'm thinking, there's, I know those are different grades, but that's a pretty big disparity, at least mentally in my mind, between the students who are taking what we know to be advanced coursework and actually counts as advanced coursework, and what seems to be showing up on the test of the statewide standards. So, I'm interested in sort of where we're going with that, too. But it sounds like a lot of that will be dealt with in the next presentation, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Member Kamara?
Thank you. I just have three minor stuff. One is, I, first of all, thank you guys for this, the report, because certainly, when you don't have the chart and not know what you guys are going to come and say out here, it's good to kind of have this verbatim. So, on it, it says of the 10 schools in 2023, six were identified as being among the lowest. So, I thought like, maybe the chart was going to be, was going to have the 10 schools, like the 10 underperforming schools, but it said it showed like, summary of schools with highest increase in accountability percentile scores. I was just kind of curious in terms of like, which are the 10 schools? And then, I guess my second one was, you know, for that table one, I do want to say, you know, good job to the work that has been done, because a lot of the schools that I do see here are occupied within urban, rural urban districts that, you know, serve a lot of urban kids. So, to kind of see some of these schools, you know, doing well, whether it's a few percentage, percentile over, you know, I do want to commend the work that was put into this. So, that's my second thing. And then, I guess my, yeah, then my last other observation was, because usually like courses like, courses like math and science, you know, those are really rigorous courses, you know, that sometimes it's really, you have to do a whole lot to kind of see improvement. So, I'm happy to see that for grade eight, you know, and then also for math, from grade three to eight, there were some increases. I, you know, kudos to all the students and their parents, and of course, all the educators that, you know, got the students this far, bravo to them, because those are two very, you know, crucial courses. And I look forward to all the initiatives that this district has to, you know, move all of our students along the lines with regarding to, with regards to increasing MCAS scores, whatever that means. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you very much for that, and look forward to your next presentation. No. So, you can file that. Those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Okay. We have the student advisory with us today. We have, was it Mary Jane? Was it Mary Jane up there? So, Mary Jane Bata, so is here with us. We also have Thomas, she's from Worcester Technical High School, and we also have Tom Sutton from Burnco High School. Tom, do you want to introduce yourself and... Tom, do you want to introduce yourself and?
Hi, I'm Tom Sutton, I'm from Burnco. I don't really know.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, I kind of just stood here and, and so, really excited to work with all of you guys this year, and hopefully next year as well. I think this is a great opportunity. Thank you all.
Are you a senior or junior?
I'm a junior, yeah.
A junior, oh, good, so makes you here for a couple of years, so. We also want to welcome Mary Jane, too, so thank you. I know she was at another meeting at the school that she was at, so organizing something there, so that's why she was on earlier. Okay, okay. We are on approval of the grants, other financial items, so we're going to approve collectively all these items on a roll call, roll call. Member Clancy?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Novick, O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. We have some people waiting here, so we moved to the last item on the agenda, if it's okay with everybody. To request administration review and report back the next school committee meeting appropriate policy regarding alcohol usage in Worcester Public School Building for the special events with the appropriate city licensure approval.
What?
Hold that. Okay, we'll hold that, roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
I'm holding it, yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
No. Okay, we will see you next week. Okay. General business, Member Clancy? This is a response to administration on the work to the administration to organize a formal recognition for seniors who graduate from following summer school completion. Member Clancy?
Thank you, so through the chair to administration, I think this might just be a filed item, just something that I had brought up, we had done the recognition over the summer, and I know that we're working on our graduation requirements for student participation in graduation, so at this point, we can just file this item in hopes that if we do have students who don't get to walk, that we look at doing it again next summer, but we can file this item.
Okay, thank you. Motion to file. By the gentleman, Member Novick?
I just want to clarify, appreciate Member Clancy's point, are we revising language somewhere through the chair to administration? Are we revising, are we adding language to the handbook? Are we adding, where, what, where is it and what are we doing? I just want to know where the language is going to be, please, through the chair to administration.
Dr. Morse?
Through the chair, it's currently in governance.
Okay, and where are we going to, but where are we going to put the language that says if a student has gotten to X, they will be able to have a summer or whatever? Where is that, where are we going to stick?
We hope to put it into the student handbook.
Into the student handbook, okay, thank you.
Thank you. So again, accept and to file, others in favor, post so ordered. To request that administration recommend the best plan to publicly monitor progress in the health of male students as relates to the ability to participate in vigorous programs throughout the district, including areas such as attendance and achievement. Member Mailman?
Thank you. During my time on Quinn-Sigs Board, we would look at these numbers a lot, and so this, the performance of male students in our schools is not a new problem in our system, or in the state, or in the nation, but I've not seen us focus, and maybe next week, we're going to see some breakouts of the male, so that's okay, but I guess I'm wondering where an item might be, where we can get every six months, information on these, on this subset. So that, to the administration, I think it was to the administration, right? Where did this go?
It's going to student, school and student performance is the recommendation.
Oh, that's right. That's right, it's for Jermaine. Thank you.
Member Novick?
Okay, so I think we're, first of all, I think we're going to probably need to do some revising here, because we, I feel like I don't really understand what we're asking for. I also, while there are disparities by sex in some areas that hit our male students, there are also disparities by sex that hit our female students. So I'm happy to look at demographic disparities across the board, but first of all, I think we do that anyway. And secondly, I'm not actually comfortable with it simply being our male students. I also think if I'm understanding correctly, the item is something like request administration report on demographic disparities in, but we were going to need to narrow it down. We can't just sort of throw it open and say, like, whatever, or, I mean, giving examples, but we need to be more specific. So I'm not really comfortable with the item as it stands. If my colleague would like to offer an amendment that first narrows it down, and secondly, turns this into something that actually looks at more broad disparities, then, then maybe we can, then maybe I would be comfortable voting for it.
Member Mailman?
I wonder if we can, instead of sending it to the subcommittee, could we send it to administration to say, tell us what we need on the gender? I'm sure there are disparities with the girls, too, but, but I know this was a big deal in higher ed, and we don't look at it at all, so I just, so-
If that's where you want to send it?
To administration, for them to come back with a, with a-
Yeah, okay.
An item that could be sent to student performance, or whatever.
I was trying to keep Member Johnson busy in that committee, but, Member Johnson?
Yeah, to the chair, I'm fine with it going to school and student performance, but I'm actually with Member O'Connell Novick on this, just trying to get more clarity on what we will be getting in that subcommittee back from administration in regards to that. I think just a little more clarity on that.
But I think that's the purpose of sending it to the administration, so I'll send Member Novick's comments along with the item to administration to come back. Is that, I'm only putting words in your mouth, but is that what you'd like? Okay.
So then they're going to come back with what?
Well, there's no specific amendment, but I think the amendment is looking at all disparities pertaining to all people.
So they're going to basically come back with, with the item that they're going to now then send to school and student performance?
If that's what you want, yeah, if that's what Member Mailman wants, so.
Okay.
Or we can send it to committee, you can define it better there if you want. Or we can amend it now on the floor. Member Kamara?
Yeah, thank you. So I have like two thoughts about this item. The first one, so I think, so we're defining health and the parameters of that is that we're using the measures of attendance and achievement. Right, huh? Right, okay, attendance and achievement. So, okay. Okay, and then, and then also, I'd like to ask my colleague, no man. Like, so, once we get the information, like, what do we want to do with this? Because like, I get where this is coming from and I understand it, but what is in the back of my mind also is like, oh, like, a lot of our students are, you know, a lot of our Caucasian, African-American, you named all the other people, you can add the list there. There are students that really enjoy sports, so I don't want for, you know, like, I'm thinking that this kind of information, if it's one way or the other, if that is going to, you know, shake some grounds, which you don't intend for it to shake some grounds, or cause us to be like, oh, we need to make this a new policy, you know, so that's kind of one thing I'm thinking about. I see our student rep hand is up, and I will sit down, so only two things I just wanted to clarify.
I think the best, I'm sorry, Mr. Sutton?
My apologies, but I would actually like to speak through the chair on this.
Speak right into the microphone.
My apologies. When it comes to men's health, and just health in general with all students, we can look at sports and stuff, like, I have played football, my arms are all bruised, and I know, like, my teammates have injuries, we all get injured, but we can't look at that for a reason why we are missing school and why we're lacking.
No. Okay.
Okay, let me finish.
If you want to look more into like why people are missing school maybe a little bit, maybe look a little bit more into like the mental health side of it, more than the actual physical health of it, because I know that there are a lot of, especially men, that have issues talking about their mental issues with people, not even just in school, they won't talk about their friends, they won't talk about their families, they won't talk about it with anyone. They hide it, and that's kind of why some people, they might end up actually, you know, pretending to be sick, or pretending to be injured, or pretending to be all these things that you bring into the health idea, but that broad spectrum of health is not what you need to focus on, you need to focus on the mental part of it, because that's what students need. That is a huge part of today's culture in students. You know, I know a lot of people that battle with mental health issues, and that's what we need to address more than the overall health of our students. Thank you.
Okay. Member Mailman?
Can we just take our new colleague's suggestions, add that language in? I 1,000% agree with you, and to just address Member Kamara's concerns about getting into other programs, so if we're measuring attendance as, or achievement to get into specialized programs that we talk about a lot, and the boys aren't doing as well on these things for perhaps mental health reasons, so it's not to create barriers, it's to open opportunities, if that makes sense. Thank you.
So I'm thinking that before, Miss Novick, maybe we send it to your committee, we can define it better and go from there, have a public hearing on it, but, Member Novick?
Mr. Chair, we don't have an item we're voting on. I'm not going to send a bunch of thoughts, and also, we don't send, we don't, we don't ask administration to write our items for us, that's our job. So I guess my question through the chair to administration, first of all, we're going to get a bunch of accountability data next week, is it the intention of administration to do any breakdown in terms of sex?
Dr. Morse?
Through the chair, we don't usually do that, but if the committee would like us to do that, we will.
I'm just thinking that if you did, and if we were looking at chronic absenteeism, and we were looking at advanced coursework, and we were looking at graduation and the long-term attainment in terms of high school graduation, as well as MCAS, we at least would be starting to have the academic piece of the conversation next week. We would be looking at specific data, and then, if we then found that we wanted to continue that conversation further in terms of gender breakdowns, we then could make a motion at that meeting based on actual data to continue it forward. I don't disagree, I appreciate Mr. Sutton's comments, I think that's probably a separate item, but, Mr. Chair, I'm going to make a motion to file with the notion that we are getting a bunch of this data very specifically next week, in a very granular sense, and we can then move forward from the conversation based on specific data that's actually in specific categories without sending this off somewhere. So my motion is to file.
Okay. Member Kamara?
Thank you. With regards to the specific gender, the male students, I do see validity in us looking at this, I understand what my colleague is talking about with regards to looking at things a little bit more broadly, and then maybe going in depth, but I do think, because by and large, we tend to not, even in society, we tend to not focus specific items on men or male students, since we're talking about male students, the young men, we tend to focus a lot of things on other gender, and I think that this item not only shines light on that specific gender, which we all tend to forget about in a lot of policy implications, so I do see some validity into looking at this, I, you know, I turn this over to the best way to go about this, but I do think that this is something that we need to look at specifically with this gender for our district, and, yeah.
Okay, okay, so first motion would be to file, second motion, if that fails, will go to committee, and the third, I guess, would go to administration. Member Kamara?
Yeah, I'm so, thank you, because I'm here. So from what I'm hearing is that we are not going to amend this item with said ideas, we're going to file this.
Well, it depends, well, you got to vote to file, though.
So, so there is one vote to file, I would like to vote to make a motion to amend?
To.
Oh, she has to make a motion to amend?
No, you can do it.
Oh, okay, so if people want to do that, while we are wait for, what is it, the next report here, I want for us to amend, so I would like to make the motion for us to do that.
Sure.
And whatever the vote goes.
Okay, so, 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 Member Mailman?
So I guess we don't hold items, so why don't I refile for next week, when we then have the data?
I think it's better to hold it, not-
Hold it.
Because it's a period of time before we can file again.
Okay, can I ask for a hold?
You can do that, you need six votes.
Is that first, second, third, or fourth vote? Okay, whatever you say.
No, I think that would take precedence.
Okay, thank you.
So was O'Connell Novick withdrawing her motion to file? Okay, I'm just trying to see what takes precedence, I've never had this one before. Where is the hold on this, David, do you know? Oh, here it is here, okay. So the file, so to hold takes precedent over the motion to file, so we will, the motion is to hold is first. Member Kamara?
I mean, you want to pick a vote, or? No. I just can't read.
So the maker of the item wants to hold it till next meeting.
Okay, 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 yeah, because I think initially, I think there was some kind of things are unclear here, because one time, at one point in time, I heard that we're going to file this, see the data next week, and then put it back on the agenda, or, okay, let's do that.
Okay, so the motion is to hold, roll call. Roll call? Yeah, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, roll call. Member Clancy?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes, to hold.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell Novick?
No.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we are, Member Kamara, to review the necessary support with regards to staffing school nurses during the school hours to ensure that all schools are staffed with nurses so that no school is left without a school nurse, so as to ensure safety for all students, motions refer to administration. But, Member Kamara?
Thank you so much. So, yes, so I said read, but then I also wanted to add a little bit of content to this, and I know that, you know, during the budgetary time, we allocated funds to support our public schools to have nurses, right? So in theory, is, we know what is happening, or what should be happening, but what have come to my knowledge is that sometimes, that is not always the case. I don't know how often it has happened since this academic year, mainly since we passed the budget and we started the new school year, but I know that this is of importance, and we all know that from the discussions we've all been having with regards of having, you know, a nurse within the building, you know, in the building for, in case if there's any emergency, something that is actually coming to my mind, that I, I think when, when this discussion was being in the, in an environment where I heard it, was that sometimes in some of the buildings, if there is a need for a nurse to go to else, to another building, what would happen is that if the building has a student that has a dire need, such as diabetic, and, you know, a more pronounced content can be added there, that the nurse won't be removed, so that's one scenario. And then there's another scenario where if there's not that need, they do remove the nurse. the nurse to go to another building to aid. What, what I've been gathering from, you know, just gathering from, you know, the, the neighborhood, is that even buildings that do have students that have those health complications, the nurses are still removed. I have also heard that sometimes the nurse will not go too far, maybe the nurse might go to a school that is like literally a walk and distance, I don't know, again, but I just think that this is a worthy thing for us to think about in terms of how we, you know, how we are organizing shifts and all that good stuff. And I know with the, with the contracts that, you know, I, well, I, what I know, that I know that there are gonna be some improvements with scheduling, that, you know, that nurses, you know, hopefully we have some scheduling availability to see some things that will support that, the need for, for all that to, to go. Thank you.
You're welcome. So we're gonna refer that to the administration. Probably doing so, Member Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I think the full committee's enthusiastic support of the, the sentiments, and I, that's, I think, why we all supported Member Clancy's motion to move the money to make sure that we were adding nurses. I just had a suggestion in terms of referral, keeping in mind that the quarterly report will, of the budget will be coming up at the next Finance and Operations meeting, which will have a nursing line. What if we referred it to FNO and actually talked about it there?
Okay, let's make some-
It's a suggestion.
Member Kamara? As the maker of the order?
Thank you. So I think, like, when I'm understanding a lot of things, I try to understand what is the main issue here? If, if it's finances, or if it's just like, you know, staffing and shifting things, hey, I don't work in the system, so I just get it.
Referring your comments.
Yeah, so like, if I knew that more, it would, it would allow me to understand, but I do think it would, it should end up in FNO if there is budgetary implication, which sounds like there may be.
Yes.
So thank you.
So we go to FNO, I think we're about four nurses short, Dr. Kew?
Through the chair, so up to date, we currently have had eight, what we call incidents of insufficient staffing. So whenever nurses feel like there's insufficient staffing in their schools, they do file a form, and today I do have eight of them. But when looking at it closely, it's not about that we do not have insufficient staffing, it's more about the concerns about the attendance of the nurses. So what happens is when nurses are absent, they get pulled from other schools to cover other schools. So I want to be clear that we do have, the committee has been wonderful in ensuring that we do have sufficient staffing of nurses, but it's more an issue of attendance of nurses at this time.
So if one person's out sick, which could, which happens naturally, you're short, you have to move somebody, which, okay, yep. Okay. Okay, so we'll send that to Finance. Those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Next is the Work with the Claremont Academy School and the Dedication Scholarship Memorial in the Name of Alan Jenkins. Member Johnson?
As agreed.
Those in favor, we're gonna refer that to the administration. Those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Member Kamara?
Yes, I have a question, because this is the first time I've-
You have a clarification on this?
Yes. So I guess my question, to work with, okay, so it's like, of these three items, which, which ever one is favorable, that's what's gonna be chosen? Because I guess like the other, what I really wanted to ask was like, how would we do a scholarship? That was my kind of question, but, yeah, I just was trying to understand.
Yeah, so I think what Mr. Johnson's asking is one of the three, it's some type of dedication or scholarship, his name, and the, or memorial in the name of Alan Jenkins. So it could be a scholarship, but it'd have to be funded, probably through a fundraiser or through the school administration, or, is that correct, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, that's correct. The administration will work with Claremont on what, what-
What they want.
Whether it's a dedication, memorial, or doing a scholarship.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to understand the process, just for that specific scholarship.
Okay. Next item up is to select a delegate and alternative for the Delegate Assembly for the MAS, MAS C Conference, November 2024. Okay, selected delegate on an alternative. This is Member Johnson?
Yes, thank you. So as we all know, we will be attending the conference in November, and in doing so, we would need to select a delegate and alternate for the assembly there. So I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna nominate-
Go ahead.
-Member Mailman as the delegate for this year, if, and I think we will need a second on that, that.
Okay. So we have a, we have a nomination for Member Mailman to be the-
Delegate.
Delegate. Now we need, for any more nominations, and also an alternative. So Member Kamara was first, then we had Member Novick.
Um, I don't wait for people to nominate before these important things. So I would like to be, to put my, my name up for, to be an alternate, because last year, as a new school committee member, I didn't get to go for job reasons. It was not because I couldn't go, it was for my job reason. So I want to be an alternate for this delegate, which will allow me to learn other insights for this position. Thank you.
Okay. Member Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to nominate the Vice Chair, Member Johnson, for the alternate, please.
Okay. Okay. So we'll take all these separately, so everybody accepts their nominations? Member Mailman, you accept your nomination? Member Johnson?
Yes.
Okay. Member Kamara? Okay. So the first one up is, uh, for the delegate, Member Mailman, roll call. Member Clancy?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. So the, so we'll take a roll call now, and people will mention the person they would like to vote on, and we'll track it, and, uh, from there, so. Okay, roll call. So we're gonna take a vote, name the person you'd like to name as alternate. So, um, so this will be a one vote, because there's seven of us, so. If you want, Member Johnson, you say Member Johnson, if you want, Member Kamara, you say Member Kamara. Okay? Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Member Johnson.
Member Johnson?
Member Johnson.
Member Kamara?
Um, Kamara.
Member Mailman?
Member Kamara.
Member McCullough?
Member Johnson.
Member O'Connell Novick?
Member Johnson.
And Mayor Petty? Uh, Member Johnson.
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, so I want to understand, last year we did this, no, not last, was it last year? Yeah. So we did the same process. I want to understand who was the, I know it was Sue, you was the delegate, and who was the alternate last year?
Member Clancy was.
Okay. So I would like to say that I understand everything here is my vote, but I, and I understand that Member Johnson is the Vice Chair or such forth, but it's, it's pretty disencouraging that the vote was taken in such a way. And I do hope that as we all, you know, do our job on school committee, and that this opportunity, this opportunity presents itself again, that we do nominate people who, who have not gotten the opportunity to, and who wants to get the opportunity, rather than it just being like a whatever else show.
Understood.
So, thank you.
So I'll tell you what, I'll vote for you next year, for all here. Okay? Okay? Okay. We are on the next item, the work in discuss the MCA, MAS, MAS C Resolutions and Bylaws. Member Johnson?
Yes, again, there are some resolutions that we, we also looked at last year. It's in the backup, I don't know if my colleagues had the chance to take a look at it, but I guess we will go through them and decide whether or not we want to sign on to those resolutions.
Okay. Member Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I think we, we discussed this last year, one of the things that I think is important for us all to remember is that the Delegate Assembly is a multi-member, member of school committees, which means that the resolutions as proposed rarely are the ones that actually pass. So there's a significant amount of, of trusting that the, the position of the full committee is gonna be represented at the table as things alter over the course of deliberation. So we're not really instructing, um, Member Mailman and Member Johnson so much as sort of giving them the flavor of where the school committee is on the items. So just a couple of comments on the resolutions as we go through them. First of all, the resolution one, on full stable funding for Metco, let me note that Metco was originally intended as the first step towards what was supposed to be a desegregation of the entire Commonwealth system of schools, which never happened. And personally, I'd like to know when we get back to that conversation. I'm kind of tired of us pouring $30 million a year into a handful of students being shipped from Boston and from Springfield into the suburbs and pretending that Massachusetts somehow has solved desegregation. I don't know if you want to take that fiery line, Member Mailman, but that's my position on that one. In terms of transportation bidding proceedings, luckily, we don't have a dog in that fight anymore, but I know that our sympathies are with those who do. On Resolution Three, there is a significant amount of energy every year at the budget that goes into full funding for regional transportation reimbursement, and I'm wondering when we're gonna remember that municipal districts are also supposed to be reimbursed for transportation, because that's never happened and it never comes up. I also don't think that Resolution Four is actually MAS C's job. I think that we, for example, have chosen to handle the equity position differently than the way that they're presenting it here. So I'm a little concerned that the, that the position of the, of the resolution is that, is to instruct districts as to how they are to staff things. On Resolution Four, Five, while my sympathies are with Wachusett, and I think that better funding is a great idea, I'm wondering when we're gonna have a conversation about the inequities of the gateways, something that you, of course, Mr. Chair, have been very active in, but it would behoove our association to actually get behind that and have the same conversation that we did about the Student Opportunity Act. Resolution Six, we actually have already passed. Resolution Seven, I realize that I may stand almost alone on this one, but I continue to hold, Mr. Chair, that the first whereas, and the third that are actually a contradiction in terms. In other words, if we hold that access to a high-quality publicly-funded education is a guaranteed right written into the Constitution, that is a state obligation and that needs to be measured in some fashion. The way that the state has chosen to do that happens to be the MCAS. We cannot like that, we should go fight it out at the Board of Ed if we want to, but that is actually something that's a state responsibility. On Resolution Eight, while I have enormous sympathy for safe storage of guns, I don't think it's actually our job to be doing that. That's where I am, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Member Mailman?
Through the chair, I'm not sure who could, has more information about this, or maybe wouldn't learn it till afterwards, but Resolution Five, um, on the mass school building authority, and I concur with, um, Member Novick, that what about the gateways, right? But what was somewhat befuddling was this, the last item, be it further resolved that the Mass Association calls upon mass legislature to allow public preschools to be included in accelerated repair. Is that, does that reference Head Start?
Don't know the answer to that. But I, I'm sure Wachusett has a school that's standalone preschool, and we do not, so, I'm not sure if it would.
Okay, so-
So the, so basically, they have a school that they want fixed, like, we, we want East Middle fixed, we want Burnco fixed.
Right, but the preschool's a different category. I mean, we have preschools within certain schools, so if we had a preschool, if we wanted to bump our schools up the list, right, we could pick one with a preschool, if that was going to. Okay.
Yeah, I guess so, you can make that argument.
Okay. Thank you for that kind of not answer, but that's, okay, got it, thanks.
I think when you go there, you make amendment to make sure you put more money into Wachusett. Okay.
No.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, so we had a discussion. Member Mailman, you're all set?
Yes.
Now you can follow that, I guess?
Yep.
All those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Member Kamara, to consider cities' complete street traffic work done to guide the installation of speed bumps, to consider roads near Wistler Public School grounds for safety and security. Uh, Member Kamara?
Thank you. So I'm aware that there is a report that has been compiled by community members in the city, and I think probably you have some idea on that, because I think this shows up in City Council. Really, there is, there's been some conversations, I think, in one of our meetings, I believe, that was probably Finance and Operations regarding, where I mentioned that in some areas in the city where we do have schools, there may need to be consideration for the city as they're thinking about where they're gonna be putting speed bumps across to also consider our schools, because, like, there are some few areas that I can think of right now where those roads are not safe for students, and a lot of the cars speed on those roads at a necessary amount. So I just wanted to kind of have this as an item.
Okay, so we refer that to traffic? Uh, traffic. I'm referring that to-
Yes, can I vote for that?
Okay, we can say.
That was actually the point I was gonna make, Mr. Chair, thank you. This, this isn't under our purview. So I, we, I would be happy to join, um, Member Kamara in filing this as a public petition before the council, but this is a council item, it's not a school committee item.
We can, we're gonna have to file, we can file it from here tonight and send it over there.
Okay, do we have the, we would, if we're gonna have the capacity, so I, I think the only way that we can send things over there is through you. So if you'd like us to send it through you to council, that's fine, but it, it shouldn't go to our subcommittee, because we don't have any say over this. So I'd be happy to, to vote for it if we're gonna change the referral to something that goes to the city side, because that's where that happens, as, I mean, we talked about this at the last meeting. Thank you.
Member McCullough?
Thank you, and through the chair, that was actually my question as well, but I do obviously see the value in us looking at these safety concerns, and I don't know if an amendment to that as well, going through you to the City Council, would be that someone in administration looks at this report, so we can kind of pair up to see where our recommendations would be from administration when we're asking that ask of the City Council, where they're gonna consider the, the speed bumps, since we don't get to dictate where they go, could we make a recommendation through our requests to the council? So that was my, I, I'm not sure if that's a possibility, but that would be my thought if we're actually looking at this as a school system. Shouldn't we have a recommendation that could do that? But I don't know-
Where you want the speed bumps, is what you're saying?
Yeah, procedurally, if we could have the input from administration to, through your order onto the council.
Mr. Allen and Superintendent meet regularly now with the Treasury, and Treasurer, and CFO, and also the City Manager on a regular basis, talk about these issues. But we can amend that to include the recommendations I think that Member Kamara was talking about.
Um, so, I guess the amendment is that, so that was what the idea for this was, anyway? Because I believe I sent it to the administration, correct? Right, where, where did it go?
No, this is, this is going to Finance and Operations, but we should, to make it work right, though, is take what you want done and send it to the city side and-
Right. So my initial thought was because in FNO, we do meet with City Council, so I was, that's what, that's what the thought was with regards to why I sent it to FNO, but I'm comfortable with my item going to the administration, because that was the initial thought, that we would talk about this as an administration, and then it'd be directed via your channels to the City Council, so I do agree with that.
So let's take it as amended and sent to the manager, and, so I think, so I think the right process to make it quicker, we already have your recommendations as amended by Member McCullough, and send it to the City Council, waiting to send it to Subcommittee for Public Works, and that's where they, that's where they pick the speed bumps. So the speed bumps are really chosen by the district city councillors. So the sooner you get it over there, that they'll take a look at this and, and this report.
Okay.
Okay?
So, so, so that means we're not, we're not sending it to the administration to-
No, we're sending it to the city administration.
Oh, okay.
And Brian, we asked, maybe you may refer that, that next time you meet with the manager, make this an item a topic, I was like-
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, so as amended, send that to the administration, all those in fa, city administration, those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Okay, what's the next one here? I request that the student handbook be amended to include language expressly discouraging students from sharing food on the school properties due to the dangers of known or unknown food allergies, and known, unknown pre-existing medical conditions. The motion is for the governance. Member Kamara?
Thank you. So this item was an earlier item, but it was amended, so it shows a new date on- shows a new date on there. So as it reads, for obvious reasons, I, you know, gather information that we currently do not have an item in our policy that oversees this, and I've worked in school districts where they had some kind of policy on, on this. So, thank you.
Okay. Member Quancy?
Thank you. So through the chair, I, my biggest concern is I just don't know how we are going to develop a policy on this and expect our staff to be able to police this. Do I think it's something that we can encourage? Absolutely, but I can't imagine having our staff in the schools policing who's sharing food. I think of the elementary schools, I think of even in the high school. I just don't see it, that we can develop a policy around this. So my motion is to file this.
Okay. Member Novak? Oh, I thought you raised your hand, I'm sorry. Member Kamara?
Thank you. So my motion is to keep my item, and for us to find ways in which, and, and to do a study or find how this can be as a policy, because then find how other school districts are doing this, because for us to have an incidence happen in our school, and I understand there is still some, you know, there, we're still waiting for some, certain things, but to have, but in a large school district as the one that we find ourselves in, for us to not have a policy to govern or support students, I think that is problematic. So I will agree for the administration to find the best way that they want to, because I did speak with the city solicitor on this issue, and, and got guidance on that as well, for, from a legal perspective. So I do want to shine light on that, for us to look at ways to include an item or include some kind of language to support and protect students.
So are you looking to amend this to say have administration review other policies from other school districts?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Sun?
If I may just say, through the chair, you know, we have a large issue in the high school of sharing food. It's common in elementary schools, it's common in middle schools, it's common in preschools. There, we can discourage it, but there's no way to stop it. You guys, this is a whole Worcester Public Schools thing. You guys have discouraged so many things, and it still gets away. People share vapes in the bathroom more than they share food in the actual classroom. So there needs to be better monetization of that than there does us sharing food with known allergies, because we've seen people who have had overdoses, and who have had strokes, and who have had all these health issues, because, not because of food, but because of things that are passed down in the bathroom, and because of, you know, secondhand smoke and all these different things. The bathrooms are the worst part of going to school, because I can tell you, they're full of smoke half the time, because kids are in there vaping, kids are in there this, that, and they all share. That needs to be addressed before we address food. That needs to be addressed, because if something is not what someone thinks, it can have serious effects on them. And I completely understand the idea of having, you know, a food issue. I completely understand that, that's fine. But we need, there's certain things that need to be addressed in order. Food is not something that, even if we discourage it, it's not going to stop. It's going to be passed under the table instead of just right over top. So, you know, that's just something that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
I'm going to love having you on this committee for the next year.
Two years.
Okay, two years, yeah. Okay, uh, okay, member Kamara?
Call the question.
What's that?
Call the question.
Call the question. Who just has one more comment, but then we're going to do a roll call on the, are we still going to file that? Yes, okay.
So, yeah, I do want to say thank you for that. I do, I also agree with, you know, his content about vaping. I do think as a student representative, it will be, the fact that you are here and you are bringing all of this insight is wealth, and I do think that one of the processes of the student attending some of our meetings and being here is to be able to add items like that onto our school agenda. So I will look forward to seeing an item around that in terms of how school committee member can, can support what you just mentioned. I will say, though, you know, there, there is not a weighing system when it comes to either or. I, so I, I do think, I still want my agenda, my item to go to the administration and for us to do, you know, the, the due diligence to support all students in the Worcester Public Schools.
Okay, so we have the, takes precedence, we have a motion to file as amended, we do a roll call there. If that fails, it's going to send it to the administration. Roll call. This is a motion to file. So yes is to file, and no is not to file. Member Johnson?
Just a little clarification, if we, we vote not to file, it's going to administration to look at other school policies around this matter, bring that back to us, have some dialogue, and then go from there. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Roll call. Member Clancy?
Yes.
Member Johnson? Member Kamara?
So, not to file, no.
Okay. Member Mailman?
No.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
No.
Did you say no, Mr. Mayor? So the motion to file fails, so it goes to the administration? Next is send the administration as amended.
Thank you.
Those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Okay. Okay, we are on, to consider approval of a three-year lease agreement with Webster Square Shopping Center for additional parking to serve in Gates Lane. So this is a finance item, so member Novak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through the chair of administration, we've had similar kinds of things proposed recently in other locations, and so I, I, basically, I was, I was wondering how this is managed. Do we actually have 14 assigned parking spots, and are those checked by the licenser, and do we assign them to particular staff? How does this actually work through the chair of administration?
Through the chair, we do have 14 assigned spots at Webster Square Plaza. How they're assigned, I'd have to check with the school, but we do have 14 assigned slots to us.
Okay, and they're marked and presumably are not actually then used by others through the chair?
That's my understanding. That's the way our lease agreement would be with them.
Okay, thank you.
We worked very hard to get that lease agreement, and, and so many 14 spots, but, okay, thanks for your actions on that, Mr. Allen, I much appreciate. And, but, so, roll call. This is for approval of the lease? Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Member Clancy?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Next, Miss McCullough, we already did that one. So we have announcements, then we have a motion to adjourn. By one minute, Allen, Mr. Allen, you're up.
Mr. Chair, may I make a suggestion on announcements?
Um, yeah, sure.
We, I, I know that there has been a significant amount of attention from the district on this, but we probably do want to remind people that there is actually school tomorrow, and people should plan on attending as usual.
Why are we saying that? Did I miss something? It was a PD.
We changed the count.
Oh, we changed?
And historically, we did not have school on the Friday before this vacation break. We do tomorrow. People should come.
Then we have the parade on Sunday, the town heritage parade on Shrewsbury Street. I think it starts at 12, noon, so, okay. So we have a motion to adjourn. Those in favor, opposed, so ordered.